Kamu nne kamu.
Block N.
Like this, Pamasen.
You know?
Like this. Okay. Shliyali tibi.
Look like you don't know it.
Kya bono uruluna, leba tuba muuna.
I see that you do not come from this place.
Ba ite yamuluna, ba ite kia ala, li tlele tombona.
What did they tell you? They said, "I'm coming, you must come and see me."
Eh, lekiti leti xalo, wona mu thwamutle. Eh, juali, arko panning, hulu ngli to wona mu thwamutle. Juali, mu thwamutle, ufihi.
You haven't seen a handsome person in a long time, and now the handsome person is here.
Like ite katabi.
Are we all okay?
Karu na liu tata kataba uru kimutle. Eh, ishli. Ishli. Ishli, ikar gitwana liye ena. Agesu bilitea, ang. Le lal, kawanya linda, tika kan kani. Ilu rili rindado muvi? Okay, let's start. Let's get to official business of parliament.
Eh, nikukupari kalem sibizwarona hewa palamente, simulaw.
Eh, before we do that, kikupar, repa makea feela.
May we please stand up all of us?
Bon tate, barule, re, bine, pina, buscha.
May we please ask the male to take off their hats, so that we can sing the national anthem? [Singing] Oh si, si de de la china, nusapoloayo. Yule la buluka si chabasa Eso. Mutele sele twa le ma sweghe. Oh si, si de de la china, nusapoloayo. Yule la buluka si chabasa Eso. Mutele sele twa le ma sweghe. Oh si buluke, oh si buluke, si chabasa Eso. Si chabasa, South Africa, South Africa. Etikofan monse ni ma, etikin kia fa non si. Umsirbe, bebe, bethes, bani klanse, amuhi. South of all to come together and united we shall stand. Let us live as life of freedom, in South Africa.
Thank you very much, Rialle Boha.
Eh, Rialle Boha.
We are now officially in session.
Eh, sesere kadi le juale simuso.
Eh, rekadi le, le tiniya nakatla samavaka itee.
Eh, we started a bit late because of unforeseen circumstances.
Re kopa twarelo ka kala late.
Eh, we truly apologize for starting late.
Cheka seki chi lo, liwito lakakena, Ntibi Mudise.
Like I've said, my name is Ntibi Mudise.
Eh, cheka seki chi lo, kele kulukutuan.
Like I said, I'm le kulukutuan.
Kele khulu.
Le khulu.
Ke mutaungwa mpassele.
Mutaungwa mpassele.
Mutaungwa shalele.
Mutaungwa shalele.
Ke mutaungwa ramuhae.
Mutaungwa ramuhae.
Urumfuma na kaya ba tla we, ena marutlamfuma.
Eh, as to where do you find me, eh, you will always find me.
Eh, kan kaina ya, kakin tatiyani, oskaitoloka? Eh, ka, ka, kamu jing, kamu na kimme yani, liyo nosaitolok. Eh, I want to take this opportunity to introduce the honorable members of parliament.
Eh, rata hori kenke mu nyetla, ona hori kidsi vise maloko, ashompe hanga palamente.
Are you okay, sisters? Eh, on my left is Honorable Zaminie.
Eh, kenle, ndate, mshompe hi Zaminie?
Yeah. Eh, Honorable Zaminie are domela. Ronan are domelisa, rea dumelisa. Imba, imba kawani ki Honorable, la uta moslegaswa. Ore arano ba mona, tika li li minga mu. Honorable Zaminie is a member of the committee and a member of parliament.
Mshompe hi Zaminie kele lokula palamente, ebi laha pe kele lokula committee.
Now, on my right is Honorable Vierber.
Eh, kamu na ke, rinali, mshompe Vierber.
Honorable Vierber is a member of this committee and a member of parliament. She hails from Mapumalanga.
Eh, okay, ena kele lokula palamente, ebi la kele lokula committee, o twa ali Mapumalanga.
I just have to correct my friend next to me. Our chairperson, it's not Mapumalanga, it's Mapumalanga. Dumelang, Sunny Bonani, good morning, Khweyemora. I hope you have a great time with us.
Hey, ba, hey ba tuba Butsabel. Hey ba tuba Butsabel, ova na ni twa tje. Asa leki pa, ami muona, oto wa, ose. Le aile hangwa, le so, oti matso. Me wa bahama, she corrects one thing, and suddenly you're sleeping. Hey, alanit, man. And Honorable Zaminie stands up here, wa dumelisa. Ale pa, ale pa pa timatso, bu tata gi? Oh, kamu wa baata. Kamu awaata. Di tata di tava tje, na di ba tje, adiba tje, rediken. Rediken. Eh, en, me, agasa ala ena kira, a, a, anyala. Kuru fela TV ting, ner tla bu antosidi. Juale, imba mea anyala, ba tari buwe TV, oskaitoloka we, ena? Aye kuwa, eh, aye kuwa na linda, diwa, aye umushibi le, imba ha u to renteri. Are you married? Nabato le juesa, ore, reyena gi, kispaza. No, I'm saying, you wanted to tell them that my ring is his paza, so, so I refuse that you must speak, so. What is true now? I said you must not speak, Honorable Vierber. Okay, ba khulu, arken itabi.
We are now going to officially start.
Welcome to the meeting of climate change.
Ri, amohela, eh, kopa non, ena ya, rona ya, ufetu ha habu, emo balihodimo.
We are a committee of parliament dealing with the climate change bill.
Eh, re committee ya palamente, eh, re meka meka ne li, bili ena ya, ufetu ha, ha, bu emo balihodimo.
We are crisscrossing the country, seeking for public comment on the climate change bill.
Eh, ntsare, ntsama ya, lena ha, ya rona Afrika Bora, ntsare, ba tla di twa lo, ho si chaba, ka bili ena ya, ufetu ha, habu, emo balihodimo.
So, we've been to all the provinces, Honorable Zamin, honolo, we've been to all the provinces, rekadi le Mapumalanga, juali, remo free state.
Eh, ri tsamele, di province, tse na kaufela, rekadi le Mapumalanga, we started in Mapumalanga, now we are here in the free state.
Oh sanita, be really northwest.
Tomorrow, we will be in northwest.
Ko, ko, ko ma dibey. Eh, I think it's Pretz.
At ma dibey in Pretz.
Ah, we don't want to sit in Cape Town and make laws that affect the people of Butsabel without speaking to the people of Butsabel.
Eh, hara ba tlo hori, rona ri dule kuwa na kukapa, reze mulawe, milawe, elo hori, iku ama ba tuba Butsabelo, elo hori hara, tar koko pa di twa elo, tsa ba tuba mona Butsabel.
So, this is your meeting. We want you to tell us how does climate change impact you, and how do you think we must promulgate a law that responds to the negative impact of climate change?
Eh, rona ri, kile mona, ke kopa noya lo, na, ra tla uruluna, le juese, hori, bu emo, bu na ba ufetu ha, halihodimo, eh, kaba, eh, di li ama joang, li di tamrao, tsa tje, ntsare, elo hori di ama matilo alona.
I hope all of us are in a right meeting now.
Kia, kia, tsapa, hori kaufela, haro na ri mukopa non, ene pa heti.
Ager.
Is that so?
Li mukopa non, ene pa heti. Oh, oh, oh. Eh, kuru twa ting kuwa na, ne varre repata, eh, Honorable Zaminie. Eh, abafitla kuwa na, ba kira, Honorable Zaminie abua. Ba tbe wa varre ba abalia, kere, eh, limo pliki ngi right, le ska abali, lena ko province ngi ngwene, war ba tla li funlaka, abafitla, ka va antola ki buwa, varre, yai! Mu tonar, tla mileri mo pa ti, ubua joang. Eh, be kire koba na no, awali juza ni it. Eh, they said, "No, no, 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 we are in a right meeting. That meeting of climate change is the one that we must be in."
Eh, where we come from, people thought that they, eh, they have come for the Honorable Members' Funeral, and when they got there, they found her speaking, and they were so shocked. And also, eh, at some point, they were told that they were coming for my funeral, and when they get to the meeting, I was talking there, and they were so shocked to see me there, eh, yes.
Yes. Awana bu tata, ki, ki sonta, eh, kamu ya wa kere, kere, muthwarele. Oh, tware, isn't that? Kamu ya wa sonta. Really, committee ya palamente, rinali, maloko, agupili ntswarelo, ubani, abahonu ba mona.
Eh, as a parliamentary committee, we have members of the committee, honorable members of the committee, who sent their apologies for not, eh, who could not come and be with us here today.
Eh, asuru banyatsa, ba tuba, ba free start, ba, banalima, kikatla samavaka itee, basa, basa hona ngutle.
Eh, it is not that they are undermining people of free state, eh, there are certain circumstances which led to them not being able to come here.
Ena, ba thomba, ba tuba Butsabelo, yili ba thomba, eh, taba, taba iritlising mona.
They respect, they have great respect to the people of Butsabelo, as well as the bill which brought us here.
Kiwa na ki kuwa nganle, ore, kilo ba tla mosibizikuwa na, le se DFM, kawani, sesoto sa, kasitla ki le.
Eh, I think I must go and look for work at le se DFM, because I speak excellenceso too.
Ki ba tla pozishi ne li, tu sumutaungi.
I want to sumutaun's position.
Yeah. Bu ali onamochan. Bu ali onamochan.
Speak to me, driver.
Yeah. Agesu, ah we intapri tla, ngan, ah, bu ali onamochan, imba uluki le. So, rinali apology, Honorable Holomisa.
We have apology from Honorable Holomisa.
Rinali apology, Honorable Bryant, Honorable Winkler.
Eh, as well as Honorable Bryant and Honorable Winkler.
Honorable Mbata, Honorable Kancho.
And Honorable Mbata and Honorable Kancho.
Honorable Paulsen.
As well as Honorable Paulsen.
Eh, ne vara di le ba mona, mare, cheka seki chi lo, abahon.
Eh, they really wanted to be here, but like I have said earlier, they could not be with us.
Nikina ne ur, laber, rinali, eh, bueti le di bili ba maspala, pile, mu pile ra, runamu.
Eh, I was, I thought that we were going to have leadership from the municipality.
You are here. As what? Wow. Wow. Wow, wow. So, we're doing well. So, we're doing very well. Yeah. Linde han tala ba mona, neki tole, sikhela, ampe. Eh, ki tusidi, lena, eh, kawani, neki kiri, ki kena di tabi, juale, eh, ta, ta maspala, eh, arubueka mezi, arubueka mutlakasi. Eh, juale, rashonu, ri twa razi, no kawani, imba maspala, va tye, mona, ra tla, ra tla du la tabi, yani, at climate change.
You did well by coming here. I thought that you were not here. I was just about to engage service delivery issues like water and other issues, but now that you are here, we are going to focus on climate change issues.
And for that, we want to invite the MMC delegated by the mayor to come and officially welcome us, and arjuese, ore, dinjadi bofiwe.
Eh, kaseu, ore, klo kopa, hori MMC, atle kapeli, atlu, ore, amohela mona, eh, arjuese, hori, dinjadi bofiwe.
Eh, arjuese, ore, dinjadi bofiwe.
She must tell us that their dogs are tired.
Ke tla itwe la mu uno. Eh, MMC, angabe ki tibi le uru mona, angabe ki sa, angabe ki tweri anle, angabe ki, kitli, kitla milele taie, eh, kikopa ntswarele mulo ani, kikopa, juese, ore, kaba dinjadi bofuwe na. That. Khuzung.
Greetings.
Eh, members of parliament, eh, we are here, and the support staff, and the community, fellow MMC, Mantusele Tawana, MMC responsible for waste and flood, Mr. Leku, GM, environment, the chief of staff in the office of the mayor.
Eh, rata hori, kili dumedise, maloko, ashompe hi lena palamente, hammo ho le, ba etapele, ba maspala, ba linteng mona. Hammo ho le si chaba, kakakare.
I'm quite impressed, comrade Ntini, that although you are a generation after me in the youth league.
Eh, ki tabelle ha, holo, hori, eh, reting, le elo hori ba banki, ba elo hori ba tla, morao ha, ka mani, mo.
Comrade Ntini, the generation after me, just can fasten the.
Mu du la stulo, hori, bu na ke ba, ne var se zimora, mo ANC Youth League.
I worked with comrade Manla in Cape Town everywhere, whilst I was still in the National Organization of the ANC.
Eh, ki leka sebeza, le, le lokule, shompe hi lena, le loko, eh, ndate Zaminie, eh, kuwa na ko Cape Town, ho halina, genzeke sebeza, ho lopisa ko ANC.
Me, you are welcomed. The reason why they are clapping hands here in Butsabel is because there are no white people. It's only black.
Eh, rau amohela, le, na me, le bakala, or ba osha pe zimatsogo, mo Butsabelo, ore, aona, ba sui mu na, ki, kilona le bakali, no.
So, you are welcomed. Can start with your meeting. Eh, we are here. If there are issues, eh, we are here to respond, because the mayor gave us atle instruction.
Eh, Rialle Boha, le katsa la, pele, ka kopa noya lo, na, rona, reting, eh, elo hori hona, eh, li di ntose, elo hori, twanse, rika, rabele, eh, meyara, ore, rumila, ore, retse mona, retobua, katsa na, reting mona.
Eh, li di ntsa, taro, na, kiti fasizi.
Eh, and eh, eh, we, we have also fastened our talk.
Na, agelo khulu kuwe, na, ndilisi, na, dungucha amam, dunglamini.
Eh, na ke, agelo khulu kuwe, ngusi, si, ngulamini.
Soli amuechi, kama ntswa nu, dimena amo, ta Butsabel.
Ri, amohela kaufela.
Arisware ngantle, erma melewa, iti, rete di peiso, katsela, esia mi.
Eh, let us please participate and do the right thing by participating in this meeting.
Thank you very much.
Rialle Boha.
Eh, why? Why? Or, or aidimu. Eh, agi, agi ba to, or juese, ore, dinjadi bofiwe, au keta, au tama, be disala, di re loma, adi re loma, kafe. Eh, ekarwa itsa ba tabi, ya, ore, dinjadi bofiwe. Eh, agu, agu, agu ibe, gasho amo. Dinjadi, or MMC, ore, dinjadi bofiwe.
Eh, MMC says, eh, the dog are fastened.
Okay, maybe we must, we must, we must know this part, because eh, I also don't know what it means. Dinjadi fasizi, oh, king, gasho, a sharp, sharp. Dinjadi, oh, di bofiwe, gasho, a sharp, sharp, king, curing, Honorable Zaminie.
Eh, they are constrained to go out.
The dogs are constrained, the dogs are locked. King, sharp, sharp. Awana muta tje bangni? Hi. Are, are it willing, are it willing? Ma, ma, rata, twa, kauri, the dogs are, are fastened. Di fasizi mu. Are it wearing mu, yeah, the dogs are fastened. Eh, thank you very much, Zizi.
Rialle bo ha holo, Zizi.
Ne ksa, ne ksa, va tiri buka di kritinja, zepa. Uh, kenitabin, se khulu, saju di teleba to, ketswa ka, oskaitoloka, ndati. Eh, saju di teleba to, ketswa kaya, eh, le, ki ma, impa lena, I'm very proud eh, to be standing here, hareha matona, because ki eme hareha, ama jue. Eh, ma soto sa, kaman, tusomutaungwa le ma la joang. Eh, ki, ki eme hareha ama jue, these are rocks, yeah. Eh, tse la ibu u twa. Eh, ska va itoloka, le to shul, eh, tse la ibu u twa, awaata ma ilii, yeah, so, eh, I'm what I am because of this gentleman next to me.
Eh, ki seki linso, na kabaka la, bon tate, bana, ba ling, eh, belaka.
And ki seki linso, na kau, ki se tu ki me.
And, and because eh, eh, because I was eh, eh, given birth by a mother.
Eh?
By a mother.
Awu ibata ku. Yeah. I, I, I'm giving birth. Ore, I'm giving birth. Are you saying I'm giving birth? Eh, or ingat?
I am saying the mother gave birth to me.
Oh, no, I am saying that I am what I am because I am born by a mother.
Ki seki linso, na kabaka la, or ki tsweswe ki me.
Ore, I am born from a mother. Lisbon is khwasi. Hey, startka, karitwe lintabi, agi ba tje kaje, no, ore, okay, aritwe lintabi, no, ki ba tla kaje, kuru focusing, mon tu, ngi ritle tje.
Eh, I want us to focus on the subject matter here today.
Eh, ene tui ritle tje, ngitla image.
And we are here to discuss climate change.
Yeah. Eh, ma, re, ki ba tla, libueka pu, eh, unali lin comfortable kaya wa.
Eh, I want you to express yourself in any language you prefer.
As long as it's an official language.
Eh, ha, eh, zilmo di pu, nze ilonghor, eh, di ki, di pu, zele mulawo mona, eh, na hinyaro.
We also have eh, sign language.
Eh, ho na le ba ilonghor, ba, ba tloka, kapwe, ya matsoho.
Yeah, so, le ba kuhae, ba kone kuru.
Eh, so that people at home can understand.
Right, eh, kena tabi, juale.
We are now starting with our meeting.
Na li mu torin, please, ma ra, ki mu kuwa anle, ki uka, please, kisho unta, arfeela, wati na we, na. Eh, ntarfeela, ah, atela we, na mona. Handi, hati, ki tweri mona, Zizi, mu, o tweri, na mona. Eh, eh, Honorable Zaminie, kia otwari.
Honorable Zaminie, eh, I am now giving you the opportunity.
Aye. Honorable Zaminie, kia otwari.
I am giving you the opportunity.
Honorable Zaminie, kikupa, ur juese, ka overview at climate change, le, or obani, re limo, kia otwari.
Honorable Zaminie, may you please give us an overview of climate change? I give you the opportunity.
No, no, thank you, Chair, thank you very much. Dumelang, ba tuba ba hon.
Eh, kialle bo ha holo, eh, kialle dumedi, eh, greetings to you, eh.
I think all of you, la bono, hori kia za, ma kia lika, I'm leaking.
Eh, I think you can see that I am trying my level best.
Yeah. No, my, my task that I'm supposed to do, I'll try just to, kiri tla luse, se fe la anyan.
Eh, my, eh, sibizwa ka, he, kuhore, na, kiri tla luse, se fe la, anyan, eka tabe, eh, ritse mona?
Climate change is a reality.
Eh, ufetu ha, ama emo, alihodimo, kinto ilonghor, eti.
Anybody who says to you, "Iyo, climate change," must just run away.
Mo tu, oh, eh, mo tu, oh, ilonghor, o tarha, io, olisebe, horo, o tla basa, buin eti.
We're going to live our life with climate change.
Re ko, pe la, bu pelo, baro na, kaso na, si, emo, sena, sa ufetu ha, ama emo, alihodimo.
These changes, they affect us differently.
Eh, di petu ho, sena, di are ama, kame, kua, efapani.
There's a strong heat right now is happening.
Eh, ho na le, me cheso, esa, eh, 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 tenele tje, ilonghor, eh, ya itzaha la, ho na juale.
Heavy rains.
Li di pula, tama, tse na, ngamata.
Flats.
Eh, li di kohola.
Then these things, they affect our lives.
Eh, ntose na kaufela, di ama matilo, aro na.
The way they affect our lives, you find the streets are being washed away because of floods.
Eh, kamhuoi, linkating, refuma na, obali, di tsi nyehelo, di tsi denza, ro na, kabakala, di kohola.
People are dying because of heavy heat.
Le ba to, ba kofala, kabakala, mo cheso, ofetantika.
I think all of you remember, February, about eight people died in Northern Cape because of heat.
Kia tsapa, hori, ho na, le, leka, leka hopola, or ka February, ho na leba tuba rubedi, ba ilohor, ba ilabakofala.
Experience a hit stroke every time, oh and then.
Eh, kabakala, la mo cheso, ona, o, ofetantika.
So, these things are happening because of changing of environment.
Eh, tse na kaufela, di itzaha la, kabakala, di petu ho, se, ban tje, motu kuluhon ya ro na.
Now, the bill that were coming to present it to you.
Eh, bili ena, eh, ritli sampe la lo na.
Is here to try to find out what best that we can do to fight climate change.
Eh, re leka, hori, ki di khatot, di fita, rekadi ngan, hori, re kono, hori, luanse, petu ho, ena, ya, ma, emo, alihodimo.
The chaplain like to say, "We can't stop the rain when it's raining."
Mu du la stulo, orata, hori, re kesi, emesi, pula, ha, ena.
Ena ki need yo na yo.
That is so true. That is so true.
But as wide is happening, therefore we must find out to say, "How can we stop the rain to affect us?"
Eh ifela serkas etan hori rona reka emesa joan pulaha hori eh eh hori eri ama mo matilon aro.
This climate change does not only affect us around in South Africa or here in Free State.
Eh petuho ena ya ma emo alihodi mo ari amero na fela mo Afrika Borua kapamona mo Free State afela.
It is affecting the whole world.
Yo na iama lefaze gabopara.
That is why if those who knows history, there is a place that is called North. What do you call it, that place was called? Yes, that place.
Eh baobatze bank history ba zebay honali tulebari.
The degrees there are zero degrees, so cold.
Uha uha bataha holo moke zero degrees.
Oh oh jokraft, eh history. Yeah, you know, sometimes, you know, we have done this thing, what do you call it, eh eh history in our own time. We are combining geography and history as one thing.
Eh kana kotsela zaronahay eh nereza eh history in eh ikop history in eh ikopanyali ona geography.
That is why when you talk about North Pole, we thought it's part of history.
Eh kika ho haruguaka North Polar na nor kika rolo ya history.
But now what is happening is that as wide is affecting everybody all over the world.
Eh se eh thoe itzahala angohore eh iama batukaofela lefaze gabopara.
There were a lot of agreements that were taking place around there.
Eh hubile liditumela noze ilohore diledia nating zamachaba chaba.
So South Africa, because it's concerned about this climate change?
Eh hobani, South Africa loana eh Afrika Borua echatatsa eh ile gabu emo bona ba ofetuha ha.
We became part of the Secretary of Paris Agreement.
Eh le bona ba ilaba bankaka rolo moho signing tumelanoya Paris.
And Kyoto Protocol.
Le tumelanoya Kyoto.
We are doing that because now we're trying for all means to reduce the degrees from two degrees to 1.5 degrees.
Eh zena esesahora rekonahori eh retewo le eh hutesa hutwa hutu degree who ya hutu 1.5.
Now, the bill that were coming out with it, ne?
Mola eh pili ena eh re kangelo na kache no.
It wants us to come out clearly and say how do we respond in this climate change.
Eh ebata hori redule mofaze hori retale maano hori njua le rona ri i karabe la joan. Hobu emo bona ba ofetuha ha bu emo balihodi mo.
This bill that you have it on your hands now.
Eh pili ena eh nalinyo na lenalyo na matzon alo na njua le.
It's not a law at the moment.
Eh ki le tye ruho na njua le.
So we want you in order to be able to contribute on it.
Eh le rekopa he horo na le le tete tye loho yo na pili ena.
So that it can be able to be a law.
Hori eh kono hori ibe mulaau.
That is why we are here, was the construction of South Africa.
Eh libakalele rikisa mona hobani mulaau teo wa Afrika Borua.
It simply says, "There's no law that can take place without your involvement."
Eh hobani oru hauna mulaau ilohoro otlatsenyatsebezung ilohore se chaba asatwa yela.
Therefore, it means all of you here, you must speak about this bill.
Se osibulela hori kaofela harona relelemona rotshwanseribuaka pili ena.
And tell us and say, "In this bill, there is other issues that you have left behind, they must be part of the bill."
Le re duetze hori rona harish epile pili ena rebwanankarohonalidin thate rileense ilohor lidisilemura oru kopor lidike nyemo.
You don't only critique it, but must give us advices.
Eh re rekopa hori lonale sampa fela koralempeli lake hori lerie elete eh hori kedi fidin thate rekadi kenyamo.
So that all of us, when now it becomes a law, we can be able to say, "I was part of it."
Eh hori kaofela harona habili ena epasiswa iba mulaau.
This Parliament Portfolio Committee that is sitting in front of you.
Hori rere ringileka rolo uhu mohu itzwen hamulaau ou eh komiti ena ya parliamentele mobele harona.
That is called Forest, Fishery and Environment.
Ya zamiruza di thapi leza tukuluho.
Is here to hear you, what exactly do you want us to say?
Eh remona hori ritoluwa hori lonake ingi tewe lozele batka hori lidike nyemo no.
Because without your involvement, this bill won't be able to go forward.
Hobani, kantle ilohor lonale nkeka rolo mulaau ona okesu kono hori okinsiwetsebezo.
We are pleading with you that please say whatever you want to say about the bill.
Eh ra lekopa hori libue selebatka kusibuama ba pili pili ena.
What is it that we can be able to do to make sure that now this bill pass and it will be able to protect us from this climate change?
Hori ke ingi serkas etan hori renete fazo hori pili ena ya pasiso ilohore. Eh kono hori irisi relate mobu emo bona ba ofetuha hama emo alihodi mo.
Remember, this is not yet a law, but we want to make this bill to be a law in future.
Eh lehopole hori pili ena haso ibe mulaau ifela rebata hori ibe mulaau eh kamos.
Therefore, parents, our participation here is very much needed, thank you very much.
Eh kase uhu onka ka rolo halona hoboshua koha holo kialé wo hatad.
Nekina na rotla guasoto. Nekina ane oru ndate rotla guasoto eh.
I thought that the interpreter will speak soto.
Ilaki le ora ah rakasa emua rakasa emua muhele kwanale se edi eh ona batwa le se edi kua.
Uh I I think that he can. One, two, I think that we can try to find a spot there at the city FM.
Eh ekari arnale matat. Impa aru atwehili aramu teste fela oru ora ete na eh. Now, kineketsuarisiti honorable Dlamini.
Oh.
Ndatekupa winter breed. Neketsuarisiti honorable Dlamini.
All right, I got Mr. Dlamini arrested.
Ah 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 ah. Ay, isli isli matata onama nga ta, arukilin tabi. Liutile honorable Dlamini aruwaire limuager. Yeah, ki ona thwe ritliti, se se ta otsharisa na di na ditweli. Eh tabang eh kibadu u invite.
Uh Mr. Tavang, I'd like to invite you.
Eh oru fe nama ya bill.
Uh to give us the nature critique of the bill.
To give us?
The nature critiques of the bill.
Eh arefe nama.
Okay, to give us the meat.
Come and give us eh the context, you know, come and give us the context of the bill. Yeah, eh don't give us meat. Give us the context, Tava.
Oscaredana ama me oru fe fela dinka tsakono kono tamo la ucho.
Eh thank you, thank you, thank you, honorable chaplain.
Kialé boha mudila stilo ya habani.
Eh Portfolio Committee, Forest, Fishery and the Environment.
Oh, ye kialé dumedi salona haphe haphe eh eh komitiya portfolio ya zamiruza di thapi amolza tukuluho.
And greetings to the MMC as well.
Kialé dumedi sa haphe batukleba di MMC.
And the community of Botsavelo as a whole.
Akasubile esischava kaofela sa Botsavelo.
Eh now chaplain, yesterday you asked me eh where I was from.
Mudila stilo maobani wilan bota hori keshla hoka eh antlen.
And when we were in Alexander, I said I was from Alexander, but chaplain, I also want to make this point, this money.
Eh hanirelenda kileka oblela oru antlen tekela Alexander.
In this particular area of Botsavelo, Mo Section E, just close to the Universal Church.
Mo motukuluha ena ya Botsavelo ko Section E, how finyana le kere kere Universal?
Genali lehaila esumo.
That's where, my family is from there as well.
Now, Tava, Tava ki ena mona.
This is what we are here for.
Eh climate change.
Ofetuha habu emo balihodi mo.
What is this climate change?
Antlenle ofetuha habu emo balihodi mo ke e.
Climate change refers to the long-term shifts or changes in temperature.
Buofetuha habu emo balihodi mo hobulela petu etzala nyatempelaja yana ku etelele.
And weather patterns.
Hamohole emo alihodi mo.
And this is mainly caused by human activities.
Me antlenle zena sebakuwa kidin thotse batu badietza.
Especially the burning of fossil fuels.
Ha holo holo huteswa hadin thotse itze.
And these fossil fuels could be coal, it could be oil and other gases.
Me din thotse na tere buan katsona ekaba mashala, ekaba di 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 kasi tedi kapadi petrol.
Now, these fossil fuels produces gas that trap heat in the atmosphere.
Me din thotse na tere cheswang, dietza hibaka mocheso olonhor obaspa kapake.
Hence, you always hear eh the talks around global warming, global warming, global warming.
Kika hona rujanga huteswa eh ofutumala halefats, ofutumala halefats, ofutumala halefats.
Now, these gases are mainly carbon-containing gases.
Di kasi tena ha hula nyane ke ke kiri kabon.
The prominent one being carbon dioxide.
Eritwa yana leonaki carbon dioxide.
And that's why we always hear people saying carbon dioxide, carbon dioxide is bad for the environment and for the atmosphere.
Kika hona rasyalon rujaba tuare carbon dioxide de hayin 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 tsebili hayin hayin molemong wa 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 katikuluho yarona.
But there are other carbon-containing gases that are a problem as well.
Impa hona lidhi kasi tedi haphe haphe taina lenkaboni.
Now, when you have this blanket in the atmosphere.
Hauna lukubuena spakapake.
That is trapping the heat.
Ilonhor etzahora eh mutesona ueme mo.
Now, it starts causing these erratic rainfalls.
Ke ekalahueta horo hobanidipula tse nan katsela satwa yeleha.
If you are a farmer and you are planting, you feel that there are seasonal changes.
Me hiba olisohai zena wasuutwa hiba eh di shadi fetuha.
The chaplain and honorable Dlamini has reported on heat heat strokes that we've 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 eh has been reported.
Mototlehil Dlamini wila bua kamocheso ona osatwa yeleha olonhor rileratlalehela kawoona.
Now, in this particular area, because I'm a resident in this area now, of this drought that has been exacerbated by climate change before.
Kahaki kemwaiu amonaki atseba kakomelo ena etzala ilonhor ebakuwa ke petu ena ya buemo balihodi mo.
Now, what does this bill that you have in your hands mean in relation to this changing climate?
Now, pili ena ilonhor itzwerelitshona ha, ebulala ege maba pili petu ena ya buemo balihodi mo.
Now, this is an attempt to enable us to justly transition to a low carbon.
Antlenle kema iteko ayetwang, atorutusa hura refetu heleka pare re 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 neyelkis kerekise eh kaboniyarona.
And also a climate resilient economy and a society.
Me itorutusa haphe haphe rebese chaba se ilonhor resochona ho emelana le 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 buemo balihodi mo.
But this also enables us to respond effectively to the effects or the negative effects of climate change.
Me hapesena se ritusa hori rokonoh arabela butatembona ba buofetuha habuemo balihodi mo hana ku etelelele.
Now, this bill provides for a coordinated and an integrated response.
Pili ena eritusa hori rabalele tsebidi sano mor, tsebidi sani kaofela katsela eh huka antwing handi.
In responding to the impacts of climate change.
Ilorokono arabela hudi tama rao tsebakuwa ke eh petu ena buemo balihodi mo.
What this means is that these pockets of work or the interventions that have been done are now streamlined and well-integrated and coordinated to respond better.
Zena se sibulela angohore, ma ituko ola asing ayenzu, na ah hobuka ngan eh ah hobuka na ebenga ta ngwen bakinsaura arabela hudi tama rao zena zaofetuha habuemo balihodi mo.
In other words, it's an attempt to create a well-oiled machinery.
Kama ntsuama nfe la, ekitzila ilonhor rokonoh sebeza katsela eh atlehili.
But also, it's an effort to stabilize these greenhouse gases that we've been talking about just now.
Hobuetze haphe haphe elintzila ilonhor mutesona osipakapakege, ibe otsitiswang.
As a country again, like honorable Dlamini has said, we have these international commitments and obligations.
Jua le jua le kaha mototle Dlamina abuile hori, rona jua le kanaha re, re na le ri ri kamme hotama chaba chaba, re na litla motse itze.
Therefore, this bill also tries to give effect to the reporting on international stages.
Kahona pili ena ke ngua ya maano aritusa hori, rekonoh kenyale tshoho ma iteko ngayetwang kima chaba chaba.
The most important is that we protect and preserve this planet for future generations.
Ntabusho kafela kuhore, re re sirilete zelefasilela rona bakinsame lukue etang.
Now, the bill consists of six chapters.
Pili ena, ena lidikarolo se tseletze.
Chapter one of the bill.
Karolo ya pili ya pili ena.
Talks to interpretations, objects and applications of the bill.
Ibuaka di tlaluso merero, lo hori ekabili ena ekake ngua tsebezung juan.
Now, this is just setting the scene, talking to definitions, conflicting laws and how the bill needs to be interpreted.
Kama ntsuama zena zena katsa sa karolo ena eresaluse tshohori kadi tlaluso rekame rero yaya ona, lo hori hiba hona di kusang limilao emi huka sebezung juan.
Chapter two talks to policy alignment and institutional arrangements.
Karolo ena ya bubedio na, ibuaka ma emo au a a a police, hamoholi di tsebidi sano liditeo kapaleme kato emi.
And this is now how this provincial and municipal intergovernmental forum structures should be amended to incorporate climate change.
Me zena sibulela hori di di foramota profensi tabo maspala, di kake nenele di kake nyale tshoho juan ho arabela nha petu ena ya alihodi mo.
This part of the bill also talks to the eh presidential climate change eh or climate commission.
Karolo ena ya ya pili, ibuetze haphe ama eh komishi ni ete ya ya buemo balihodi mo ete ilonki mo presidente.
That is their functions and roles in the country.
Kama ntsuama ketsu oru bayi karabella joan, bui karabella ba bo na hamohole karolo seutu badifuwe.
Chapter three of the bill talks to climate change response by provinces and municipalities.
Karolo tre ya pili ena, ibuaka horu arabela eh butatembona ba ba petu eh climate, impa di karolo sa profensi le maspala seudidi bapa la.
Now, this speaks to how provinces and local governments should be responding eh to the effects of climate change.
Now, karolo ena eh arabela hori di profensi, hamohole mi buso ya sela hae, di ka arabela juan ho petu ena ya alihodi mo.
And we know that parallel to this bill or this legal framework now being enacted, we are also, we all, we've also been doing some work eh in that regard.
Kahona kaofela naratseba hori, karolo nyana kaofela hona le seu karona lukelangu kenyale tsho resti tseba kinsa o arabela eh petu ena ya buemo balihodi mo.
Chapter four talks to the national adaptation to the impacts of climate change.
Karolo ena ya bona yo na, ibuaka karabella etwa naha kabupara bakinsa ofetuha hona habuemo balihodi mo.
Now, as a nation, how we've been rallying behind the national response policy and the national climate change adaptation strategies?
So kama ntsuama zena sibula, juale kanaha kakaka retsu, retsa eh nyuho arabela eh ho arabela kapayu ilon horu fetuha hama emo ana ala ho ah abuemo balihodi mo.
Now, chapter five talks to greenhouse emissions and removals.
Karolo ya five yo na, ibuaka ma emo ah hasi eh chesang espakapake, lo hori di atro di kusang juan di kasi tena.
And this now speaks to two parts, the sector line departments, provinces and local government, and then the other part is on eh 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 carbon budget.
Ena antlenle, ibuaka eh di di teriki tsete, bele hamohole hori tikanyeto, ya ya budget, ya kabonikifi.
Now, carbon budget speaks to those big emitters or private organizations that they need to be emitting these carbon-containing gases within a certain threshold.
Haribuaka tikanyeto ya kabon, ribua ha hula nyana re na haneka batwa ilonhor ba bantaxasi e ngata, me ba fuwa ba fuwa muwe diwa hori baluke la hun taxasi ekaka.
And therefore, the minister, the emecys and mayors are empowered by certain clauses to now look at these eh big emitters.
Kahona batwa tshona liboma joro di emsi, hamoholi ma lilitona, ba fuwa mata ayte, bakinsa hori ibe bona ballaulan batu edi eme kato ena en tanshaso, rebaluke la hun taxasi ekaka.
Now, chapter six is on general methods and transitional arrangements.
Karolo ena ya six yo na, ibuaka ma emo kakareta lidin thotse kaitwang, bakinsa ofetuha la eh buemo bobu chaba ba 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 ossebitzana kapao arabela ma emo na alihodi mo.
The bill talks to regulations, it talks to guidelines and penalties and how those penalties can be appealed.
Kahona karolo ena yo na, ibuaka hori melao, kefinyala kela ngue tshwa, ibile bua kadi kotu tsele kela ngue tshwa, hiba batwasala tele melao ye.
Now, then the bill ends with four schedules.
Me karolo ena ya ma pili ena eh kete la kadi schedule tse fo tse kaban.
Which just lists several eh 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 entities and departments and their rules and functions.
Zena kamona eh eh ya bolela horo mafa pa afapanenge, hamoholi di teotse fapani, bui karabella kapale karolo tabo na kidife.
Now, lastly.
Sauketena.
What does this bill mean for you and I as the community members?
Pili ena, ebulala ngunna hamoholoena.
If you support the bill, it means that climate change response is no longer a by-the-way issue for local government.
Hiba osapota pili ena, zena sibulela hori, taba ya eh ya.
We will take five from here and five from there and ask them to come and sit at the chairs here in the middle. So when it is your turn to speak, we ask you to please give us your name and your surname. Where you are from, which area? And whether you support or not support the Climate Change Bill? And then you can start with your oral submission. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Weber.
Thank you, Ms. Weber.
Ms. Weber. Ms. Weber.
Weber, oh, Ms. Weber. Excuse me.
No problem. No, you must apologize to me.
But I didn't, I didn't call her name properly.
I just want to say, the chairperson practiced for three months to say it and now he wants this gentleman to say it in one minute.
I can't believe you're flapping again. You know, I can't believe they are flapping again. Okay.
Can I point about ten hands? We start with you.
I was expecting to see more women because we do like, we like women. I wanted to tell you that I like women. Um, I, 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 I hope you heard, you heard me.
When I, you are noting, me now I want women.
Uh, women, ladies. I can see you gentlemen, but can you just wait a bit? I would like to give the ladies an opportunity. Oh, the chairperson likes women. Okay, uh, sir, can you come over?
Do I like women or do I love women?
Uh, the gentleman with the white cape, I did not note you. Uh, but he's already sitting. I've noted you.
Do we have more chairs?
I don't think so.
We don't? Okay.
Uh, sir, you can speak to us. I've got a very short question. I won't even waste the, I won't even use the five minutes. I only have two concerns.
Kizwa Velcom. Oh, Libisolaka kipule le daka. Eh, kizwa Velcomo.
I'm from Velcom. Uh, from an organization called. So why, why I'm saying that is because our organizations sometimes sees gaps and loopholes whereby we could assist the government to, uh, to improve. Now, we would like to, in this bill, the government to indicate the powers that certain individuals and NGOs have. The other matter that I would like to, uh, to raise is that COP seventeen was held in Durban. I was part of that conference. Now, my issue is the implementation of the decisions that were, that were taken that will propel us to do the work that we do instead of just talking about it. I would like the government next time in the future to focus more on implementation rather than writing the documents so that we can improve our, um, the, the, the climate change in the future. I am Mr. Yusuf Tukole.
Nekiri hali shapela Yusuf. Rkaleka pule. Kavikali zee baluona. Sorry, Yusuf, proceed.
I am a resident of Woteiti here in Botswana. And I support this bill. But I have two or three suggestions that I would like to raise. The first is pertaining electricity. Um, the electricity in our, in our country, South Africa, is generated with coal. And we also have issues of load shedding. And the issues that the first speaker has mentioned in relation to the conferences and COP seventeen. They state that we should stop generating electricity by coal. So I would encourage the government to, um, think deeply of, um, putting into practice the, the use of solar and wind energy. The second suggestion that I'd like to raise is regarding the storm water controls in our area. Because right now, they are worn out. Now, when the rain is very porous, the water runs into our yards. So I would wish for the government to start doing maintenance. Part of the maintenance is planting trees. The government should encourage residents to plant more trees. Uh, because the gentleman have spoken that, um, part of the, the problem with global warming is caused by, um, by. Or by carbon emissions. And scientifically, it is proven that trees can trap the carbon. Thank you.
Greetings. Uh, greetings to honorable members of parliament and greetings to the public who have come to this meeting to talk about climate change. My name is Tiri Mohwara from Bloomfontaine, Manganawum. From Batu Branch, Ward One. I support the bill. I just want to explain very briefly. Uh, I remember in nineteen ninety when I started seeing the informal settlement, uh, informal settlements in our communities. Uh, when the informal settlements started and when the, the people grabbed those pieces of land. Uh, the people started with this informal settlement. They did so without authority, without municipal authority and that puts, that compromises the municipality because once they are there, they start making fires and that smoke causes this climate change.
And I can, I can go back, uh, department that human settlement. Before Batu, by, um, ona, relay the community leaders.
Uh, we are asking the human settlement to come and assist us and, and work with us as community leaders. Uh, so that before people can start in this settlement, we must be able to engage with them as municipality. Because when they start these informal settlements without, um, the authority of the municipality, they are putting the municipality under pressure because after that, they demand to have infrastructure in those informal settlement. Uh, another thing which I have observed is that when we do not have rains or sometimes we experience rains out of season and we find that the, the farmers, they increase the food prices. Uh, that is all I wanted to, to talk about. Thank you very much. May I take this opportunity to greet honorable members of the portfolio committee as well as who are responsible for this climate change. Uh, greetings to the MMC and the public at large. My name is Chadragmati Dissotrolwe. I am a resident of Botswana, Dr. Petro Branch. I represent ANC Youth League. Before I get into the, into the subject matter. I have a few proposals I would like to make. Uh, as residents of Botswana, we have noted that we have industries which are contributing to this climate change. We also have transport modes which emit carbon monoxide. And we also have residents here in South Africa who use fire for cooking and doing other things. Uh, may I therefore make this proposal? Uh, with regards to those people who are using fires for cooking, I am humbly requesting the government to provide electricity. Uh, regarding the, the transport which we are using as well as the advancement of, of technology, we see that the situation is changing. Uh, I, I therefore propose that we use electric cars here in South Africa. Another mode of transport is the, the train and I wish that we can also use the train which is used in Khauteng which is called Khautrain because it uses electricity. Uh, now when we observe the impact of climate change on people's lives. Uh, we find that winter comes out of season when it's time for summer. It impact, it has a negative impact on our animals as residents. Uh, as I conclude, my humble plea to the government is that. I wish that as residents, when we speak, the government must listen to us. As I conclude, I support this bill on climate change. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the delegate of the parliament. We thank you that you care for us, you also care for the environment. But in future, I'd like to say, to state that in regards to the document that we have here. Please come to us first so that we can give you our views. Because this bill on my hand, it's already written. So my question is that if you come to us today, what, what about our views? So this indicates that what parliament should have started with, they are actually ending it with. But I'm not fighting with the parliament. I'm just, I'm just stating that in future, please do that. Just go to the subject of the matter. It's Sarsol who have coal mines. That affects the ozone layer. My question is that how are we going to end that kind of situation in Sarsol? They are also our, our parents here, elderly parents here, who, who uses tractors when they work in the farms. All of those things that they use there on the farms and also in their situation on the Sarsol, they affect our planet or the ozone layer. The question is that how are we going to get rid of this situation? The, the next point is that nature is nature. So the question is that since we are all using, we are all emitting different gases, you know, we are using fire. The question is that how are we going to get rid of this situation and protect our, our, our layer? The next issue is that across the nine provinces, our municipalities. I want to state this in front of parliament. The leadership that we have elected here on the community and place them on the, to be the leadership of the municipalities. You, I would like to say that gentlemen, you are failing us. So that means now, what I can say is that as a nation, we have elected you so that at the end of the month, you can go in front of the ATMs. Actually, we can go outside now, now on the nearest wards and go outside and look at them. The wards that are there are disgusting. Actually, the, the residents of Botswana are drowning after the rains. Actually, uh, uh, my good gentlemen, if you can come to Botswana and look at the situation, actually, it's not one one wishes to, to look at. So the other player that the request I ask is that Batu Basu Pehilé, Ba Fats, Ba, Ba, Ba Kolan Tika Hanoum should be given free electricity. It's very difficult when they go, when they go, when they go and ask for help at the municipal to our leadership, but their players are not attended to. But at the end, when you go to their home, they have to use fire to make, uh, to cook, which affects our ozone layer. My, my last request is that to our parliament. Please don't come, don't come to us only if you are something that you're going to benefit.
My name is Muketi Mutupi. My name is Mutobi Ranzani. I'm from Bloomfontaine. Under leadership of Mr. Mashashamisa in Watri.
My request is in regards to this bill. Oh, I've been educated with this bill. I'm looking at the upcoming generation. Those children that are not there, they have no knowledge of this bill. This is not my first time standing here in front of parliament regarding this bill. Chairperson, please understand me well. There was a bill of transnet that I attended to in Krasparis. And then I asked a suggestion from the parliament. Or they told us that they're going to implement, they're going to put trains there, but actually there were crashes at N8. So the idea was to try, to make sure that people from Busar, they can travel to Bloemfontein. And then I suggested to them that why they don't give basarres to childrens and create job opportunities? The gentleman who spoke there last. Now you parliament are gonna pack and leave and then we come from Bloemfontein. And you don't implement what your work. So that's what I'm asking, who waits for the city for the children? Please don't lie to us.
My name is Muketi. My surname is Ngaka. I highlighted some few points from the previous speakers.
Particularly the way they are reporting on international stages with regards to the progress that is being made on issues that climate change. Secondly, the coordinated and also integrated approach that has been also been uttered. Coordinated approach and also integrated approach. Okay, therefore, my concern, which is my true concern, once we. My concern is that since there's been a mention of international stage and reporting on international stage, it means there is where we need to report. Therefore, that means everything that we do has to be aligned to our international players out there. Now the issue is, we have got coal in South Africa. And then we are also being encouraged by the very same international players who are deviating from using coal. And our electricity is generated mainly from coal. And that decision was taken that to replace coal and to share some other means of energy.
And look into other measures instead of using coal.
Quite recently, there was a. Quite a number of deposits of coal, the Fumanning in South Africa, in one of the harbors, particularly Richas Bay, taken to Europe. So why those international players, being those Europeans, by long should lead the way, let us stop using coal, but yet Bona Barres stop it, yet Kama ni, but fill up by income from us and yet we are collapsing our grid here, because it's mainly dependent on coal. So my question is, do we, how are such decisions that has to be taken? Do we hurry to take those decisions so that everybody number one in terms of compliance, without looking at our conditions, whether does our grid allow us to change gas speed without having any damage to our grid? In conclusion, I say, let us first seek to see what is in our best interest before we can please the outside world. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, the committee. This is Mr. Schalo, what 14 in Mangao in Bloemfontein. An upcoming businessman who is trying, who is in transport and logistics. My brother just said a lot of what I wanted to say today because I don't think when South Africa goes out there into this signing of these accords and are participating in all these multinational organizations. I think a lot of times with best intentions, we are punching above our weight. We don't know whether we are developing or we are in developed state. Are we even the biggest emitters of carbon in the world? Why should we be the ones who suffer, but the developed economy developed on the basis of energy? If you are against the bill or the proposed law of the government, it's not that you are a denialist of global warming. It's not either or. It's the best interest of, are we even in South Africa as parliament or members of parliament who legislate, who do research, because probably you have researchers in your department. Are we even saving the best interest of this country? Do we have the best interest of our country? We don't even have an infrastructure of my brother talking about electric cars. I mean, we don't. Maybe in Jobek, we have two at the most, in Audi or whatever, but we don't. If I have to drive an electric car from here to Jobek, I'll probably stuck in Windback. Of course, we should, we should try and mitigate whatever we can, but let's start with the basics. There is a lot of weather patterns that we, probably people who are older that will know, 20 years back, 25 years back, when it rained, it didn't rain like it does now. But the thing that makes it worse is that our stormwater drainages, especially in townships, are gone. There's a lot to be said about environment. Unfortunately, five minutes is not enough. But I don't think the environment department and the energy department are in sync or they coordinate. I think there is a clash of policies there because the other hand wants to do this with energy and the other hand wants to take care of the environment. So there's a clash. There has to be a middle ground that serves this country. Only that will make sure that when we go to these accords, we represent a reasonable and attainable goals, but we setting ourselves goals that we not wanna attain. Well, in conclusion, we, I will not be the one to question your integrity or your intentions, but please at all times set policies that will develop a black child because these people have developed their countries. They are way above. We probably have one, if not two, of solar panel producing companies in South Africa, for instance. Wind turbines are very expensive. We are not denialist, but we are realist.
Thank you for the opportunity. Greetings to leadership. I think the issue of climate change has been explained to us. Honorable Lamini addressed us. Explaining about climate change. And I thank you to Mr. Taban. Who was able to explain thoroughly to the public about climate change. Leadership, I hope that you have heard the speakers who came before me. They explained fairly well. As to what is happening. About their challenges. Back to the issue of climate change. Mr. Lamini did, Honorable Lamini did explain to us that climate change is impacting globally. She also made reference to decreasing from 2% to 1.5%. It is not yet an act. We want, we are humbly requesting the leadership to come to the communities. To come to the communities and explain thoroughly to the public about the causes of climate change. Let's now talk to, about big companies. One of the speakers who came before me spoke about Sarsol. We heard that from Falcom. Or you are also from Falcom and Tenzin. We are making a humble request for the committee to go and visit Sarsol. That is where you are going to see the impact of climate change. That is where we are going to see how these industries impact on climate change. Even the cars that you are driving. Also emits that gas. It also, it is also another cause of climate change. What we are going to request to you as our leadership. Let us respect this public. Please educate them so that they can understand what is it we are talking about when you talk about climate change. Before this bill is enacted. And other speakers have alluded to the communities using fire for cooking and other things. Let's go to these big companies. Owned by, mainly owned by white people. Because they emit this gas. Which impacts on the ozone layer. Let us go there before we come to the community. As I conclude. A lot of people have spoken. I think that you have heard what they said. And please respond. Thank you very much.
Sorry, 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 chief. Baba, you didn't tell us your name.
Baba, you didn't tell us your name. And where do you support the bill? Thank you.
My name is Zamile Hans. From Bloemfontein. Under the leadership of mister.
Katlasa ward ward three.
Eh, ward three.
Billigais hesan dad.
I support the bill.
Eh, my name is Honsem Mclainke, I'm from ward one. Our country right now is losing coal coal power stations, because it's bad for the environment. And we experience low shedding at the moment. Businesses are closing down because of low shedding, people are losing jobs. Winter is bitterly cold, and yet people have to live in the dark, because we want to save the planet. Eh, like my brother said, after losing down the coal power stations, then Germany imports our our coal. And thirty loads of our coals are there just being going to overseas territories for them to use while we are trying to save the planet. An other issue of global warming. Eh, for me personally, what I learned from school, for thousands of years, the earth has been cooling and heating. That's why we have ice age twice over the past ten thousand years. And that ice melts, and then the earth becomes cold again, the same way it's happening right now. So this thing of global warming, I'm not sure about it. And let's say there's global warming. Yeah, and South Africa goes green. What about all the other countries in the world? So just because we are trying to save the planet here, does it mean that global warming is not gonna affect us? Because we are saving the planet while other countries are not. Eh, we are an underdeveloped nation, and yet we are busy comparing ourselves to first world countries. Busy taking their strategies and oh, let's save the planet and all those things. And in a country like ours, where people are living in swi- swages and rubbish is not collected, our people are living in bad environments. We are dreaming about saving the world. Eh, another thing I saw here that they talk about presidential climate commission. Yeah, they say the president is gonna eh take thirty people in that council. And some of them are going to be civil society people. How many of them are going to be civil society people? And how are those people gonna be choosing? And I once spoke about how bad carbon dioxide is. But from what I learned from school, carbon dioxide, the the trees omit that carbon dioxide and then it produces oxygen for us to breathe. And for heavy as for the heavy rains, the past three years, we had droughts here in South Africa. I think these heavy rains, the farm are welcome, as far as the farmers are concerned. And the flooding and the floods is because of governments' poor infrastructures and lack of maintenance. And lastly, I don't support this bill, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, how are you?
Oh, you don't interpret now?
How are you?
Okay. I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you very much to all the speakers. Can we note more hands? Okay, k- kala bona wundat, kala bona.
I can see you, eh eh gentlemen. Can I have, please have women, ladies. You know the way I love women. So women, you don't want to come? Eh, sir, can you raise your hands? I've noted you. Come, please, sir. No, sir, you are can't repeat yourself. You cannot repeat yourself.
How many more do we need? Two, one, lu enam. Okay. Now, this is very nice. The first, we need one more. Oh, okay, okay. One more.
The last, the last lady?
No, he can't repeat himself.
Ah oh oh, ah chonaha lo repeat.
Can we get one more hand?
The way I love women, I would have preferred to start with a woman and end with a woman.
I love women.
You like women. Ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nom Nom Bulelo. From ward thirty-four? Under under Casta Cabello? I have two or three questions. I'd like to ask the eh the officials from Saint Lake, that if a person's electrical wire has been cut off. How long do they ta- how long do they take eh to attend to the report? Did our government say said that we must pay for the electrical wires? So what I'd like to understand, especially for people who are who are sick, that is it possible for a person to use his may eh electrical eh license to for the next person? The second question is for municipal officials. Their rubbish collection eh trucks, when do they supposed to collect the rubbish? Because sometimes when you put your rubbish bin outside, they tell you that you must take your rubbish to the truck. Eh, parents, I think we are making a lot of noise. We can't hear the speaker. And it is disturbing the recording. Because all what is being said is recorded. So that when we write our report, it must be a pure report. Can I plead with you? Please, let's stop making noise. Proceed. I'd like to ask the municipal officials that if we have put our bin outside our yards, are we supposed to take those bins to the truck? The third and the last is this. Can our 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 municipality eh eh provide proper services? We live in the rural areas. Can you please close the spaces? Because of these children, marks mark us. Thank you. Greetings. How are you? I greet all of you. My name is Machauta Majoro from ward thirty-five. Under councillor Debo Fantisi. I'm here to talk about the roads. So, and the section eh the roads in section L, actually they are not proper. Cars cannot travel eh eh correctly that side. We've asked our councillor, councillor Fantisi, to talk to the mass pal and fix the roads. They did, came and used and then they patched some of the potholes there. And our toilets are full. There are no municipal trucks. They are full and eh our elderly actually did struggle. I also like to mention the plate twelve. Uh uh, they don't they have eh they don't have employment, also including my child. He has no employment, although he did N four, N five, and also a management course. He has com- he has finished a metric in twenty eighteen. Oh, twenty-four years. He's twenty-four years. Thank you so much.
My name is John Mandla. I am from ward thirty-four. I am going to eh 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 make submissions about this bill of climate change. And how it impacts on our lives as residents. Eh, I'm going to eh talk about eh how climate change affects us when it's raining, especially here in Butsabelo. Eh, we have stormwaters, but they are blocked eh because they put ways eh and the pumpers. Eh, therefore our stone water drain are blocked. And as a result of that, the water flows into the people's yards. And again, it impacts eh when it is summer. When there is no rain. Eh, we experience drought. Eh, animals die. Eh, because they do not have animal feed. Eh, another thing which I'll humbly request the government to assist us is that a lot of people here in Butsabelo work in Bloemfontein. Eh, there is a lot of traffic jam at N eight because people use their cars to go to work. Eh, the government must assist us to encourage the public to use public transport instead of using their own cars.
Obana musuo wa di kolo iluona o kosa hori, kona o o kosa unori, musuo no haunyoluwa, ozone layer i- u affecta ozone layer musuo no ha di kolo itse.
Eh, because the carbon emitted by these cars eh affects the ozone layer.
Mole di feming, onali di feme se o eh, se kosa ntenza musi.
Eh, there are eh companies or industries which emits carbon.
Impa jalele ba ka haria di feming se na se sebe zang, se 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 zang hori, ribe se affectan ntenza musi. Koridinala ba sebe ti ba sebe zang hotso.
Eh, and when we look into that eh those industries which emits carbon, there are workers who are working there.
Ha hona se, ha feme se nu di kuala, batuwa na abana ba fela wa kimsebesi.
And when those industries close down eh the people lose their jobs.
Batuwa banga ta ba sukolang, jalo karutu le hori. Onali batuwa sukolang, ba besandipati opaha.
There are people who are struggling to make ends meet and they use eh wood as a source of, as a source of fire.
Le bo na, sela se o ba di zang, di di kosa yo na, kisona se kosa ntwe nwe ya climate change.
That also has an impact in climate change.
Le shlabula, batuwa ro na, mona Butsabelo eh tota ye o mo, ba ichesa.
Eh, even, we also experience fire fires here in Butsabelo.
Jalekaho na eh, na biliena kia itse.
I do support this bill.
Kiallebo. N'abule. Kiallebo, livizola na gitemba na zula Kastau.
My name is Temba Wizua Kastau.
Ngolapa emzansi Africa wa ena Azania here.
I'm from here in South Africa or in Azania.
Now, I'd like to say to you people, if you can all listen well, ba, it's an opportunity for us, ba sitete, represent Aban Basamzansia. At my age, was now ten, ten to one in the next year, I'd like to say the last word, to say eh, as now our country was itself emancipated by us.
I thank you for this opportunity you are giving us as people of South Africa to speak because at my age, because now I'm turning eighty-one.
Twenty-one.
I'm turning twenty-one now.
Yeah.
Eh, you have given me an opportunity to speak as this country was liberated by us.
Uh, uh, accept that you are joking.
Niya vuma, uba, niya kola.
So I'd like to say to you people, as you representatives of us, tinapa emzansi apa ina our Azania.
I'd like to say to you people, njengoba ni meli ti na apa emzansi Africa, which I call Azania.
We know the government a lot of beautiful promises.
Ne nze izitembi so ez ne nze ezile.
We know that we got policies that are effective.
Siyazu, obana mikakunkuwe yenu ia sebenza.
But they're not effective.
Kotwa ke ai sebenza kakulhi.
May you give us a chance so that you can promise us right now, ba, this is not a joke.
Si, kela oba, nisni ke ituba, niskeniseki se futu, oba ani kuli njengoba.
Because you also took your time from, from your families, like, that ring some of you, like yesterday you have been saying, from Paris to Velcom up to here, that is just that is some of you only.
Oba, abane beni ba taté itlaisha besuka, beshiya insa poza bo nga semba, ngenman chilo na izolu ba, ni ba ta tope la beni na ba lapa, nisuke Paris na e Velcom, ngoku ni lapa.
I think you will take our word as we promised us that you are a full member of parliament.
Di kengban zausatniwa zishtwaya njengoba nisitembi si luba, ni ngamaluwa apelene.
With your policies as well as you have promised as well.
Njengoba beni nisitembi si lekagati, nangmikakunkuwe yenu.
May you prioritize this case to be, climate change, ba, I've made my submissions. From Paris to Velcom up to here.
Di kela oba, ni tatali ngalelo, kene eh climate change.
May you consider that fact and promise us.
Si, kela ni.
That it is a fact that you come back to us very soon or later and give us time race. Niya zba niha ba ngao, ni na you say it's going from another place to another place as a way of joking for us, ba, because there's a change, because next day is voting, and claim you'll not be here anyway.
Si, kela oba, ni tatali ngalelo, na le, ye climate change ino, oba, nisitembi si, le oba.
Because I've been following the government since inception from a late time ago, but there's no change for black people are still suffering.
Njengoba kitala keni nilande, noksuke Paris, we have Velcom, ndilapa na namtsa.
Aba guan to get prepared, ba, we are people are suffering needs of every change.
Aban to ba ya supeka ba funu chi ncho.
May you work softly and today you could go back home, come on, n'abule.
Si, kela nissebenza, woku si misela, kena kani ku to, kani niha mbekaku ulhi, I thank you very much for coming here.
Thank you, kial merisaha pe, parliament eh gataha.
Thank you, I greet you once again, eh, our dear parliament.
Eh, kitobua ka nitshetse pe di fela, ki kitobama tele le yolo gatare.
I'm going to be short and, and talk about only two things.
Eh, ntwe kitobua ka noke food security and water sanitation.
Di lo te pe di zenu ya nklake paba la sahwa di jo, moro le meti le kere lo ya le soi.
Eh, le ba ka le kibuwa ngalo na la eh eh food eh security and water sanitation, ki hori, fumana hori eh community nyarona, rewa na lebo taada.
The, the, the reason why I want to mention food security and water sanitation, it is because in our community we are facing problems.
Ntwe happe le ki hori, ufumana eh harina di ba kate boluke hiling, forta be yahu yeta food security.
First and foremost, it is that we do not have eh safe storehouses eh in, in relation to food security.
Eh, le ba ka ki hori, eh kahara meti ya ro na bohod, fumana hori rena li di porfolo, te tamayan kahara lukeshini moro sahono hori reka yeta eh food security di.
Because eh in our townships and areas, we have eh eh animals that are roaming around, um livestock that is roaming around. Now, this prohibits us eh from um, from, from having food security as such.
Eh, ha ki etamtsala, te kibuwa ngato na di porfolo, ki for instance eh di homo, di pudi, le le tedi.
When I, wh- wh- when I, when I speak about eh, wh- wh- when I speak to those involved in livestock farming, um, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about goat, sheep, cows, is, and so on.
Ki, ki to na, because di, di, di affecta eh climate ya ro na ova ni harika tlo sheba, ki, ki, ki to na te reng di du de samwe hori, di be placing eh uwa niska za, kopa na le ba tu kahare.
Because they also have an impact on our, our climate change. So I was suggesting that they should be located into one area, eh, not to be in the same area as people, so they should be have their area and people eh reside in another area.
Ha ki ta ntwe ya water and sanitation ni ki hori, eh meti ya ro na na konge, abapoluti te kata ba ya hori, hobana li di chemicali tedi, te sa tumela ni le, le ba to hori, ba kadi sebe dis.
Now, eh when it ca- when I come to water and sanitation, I'm raising it because eh our water sometimes becomes polluted, polluted eh by chemicals that are not supposed to be used by human or, or should not be consumed by humans.
Eh, ki to na ntwe te karen te no ufumana hori, ha ona meti, oto tatala o kula eh otoruki ma foma, jale, ki to na te reka hori, meti ya ro na, abe kli no hori, rekonno hori, lare sebe di, sebe di safo di, di jalozaron, ebene meti atli.
That's why when sometimes one drinks eh water, eh they become sick or develop eh new diseases because of that unclean water, so we need to make sure that our water is clean. And also it is useful eh, or, or, or can be used for, for vegetation as well.
Eh, ngatavela hori, musomo eh parliament ya ro na ntwe nte ote se kibile kazoni, egal di sheba ya galisoleli, hori, musomo ha biliena epa sakapa elo ka di we re, re, ebataha ngating, te ota di ntwe te kibile ngazona, be di lukisitze.
Now, I would like to plead with the parliament to please look into eh the, the things that I've mentioned, so that when you pass the bill, some of my contributions will be added into eh, into the bill.
Kiallebi.
Thank you.
Eh, one, two. Eh, nali vitolaka kidira Makitilani.
Eh, my name is Dira Makitilani.
Eh, kitwa oto ya thirty-six yona Butsabelo mona.
I'm a resident of ward thirty-six here in Butsabelo.
Eh, erika lepele eh ki tlalu se hori, ki kuanu oti etza eh biliena.
Firstly, I want to mention that I'm here supporting this bill.
Kata samawa kaki ana.
Under these conditions.
Kahara Butsabelo ka mona nterina lo na ma emo anu, aurufmaner na li di, li di fifo, li di kohola.
It, it is because here in our area but of Butsabelo, Butsabelo, we do experience floods.
Ne ufumana hori muso alsele hai, onka na ko, horo oka arabela eh batumba amwen ki eh, ki kola zena.
And you'll find that our local municipality delays in responding to those who have been affected by such floods.
Me kutwisa handla hori, ha biliena efeta, etla thusa le tuona, ebekusa le muso alsele hai, hori hobele eh ditkanyezo, se baniteng hori, engapa eni egalangaswa nyesu, eh muso kono arabee.
Now, I believe that eh when this bill is passed, it will benefit eh us as resi- residents and also the local municipality because it will give the municipality mitigating factors on what they should do when such eh um, such, such, um, natural disasters occur.
Ya bobe di kiena.
Now, the second issue is this one.
Kahara Butsabelo ka mona, dibuise nga ta se dibuile orana li di feme, eh zenga ta zelo reng di etza hori, di ama eh peto peto ya yu ya, ya, ya yalo ho dimu.
Um, eh eh, as we have mentioned, that we do have farms eh surrounding Butsabelo, which also, which also contribute to the climate change.
Ne hona oto thusa hori, eh le fapa, lebele molao o ti ti zeng horana, o kontrola juang di feme se o, hori, eh tikulu ya ro na eh kono boluke.
Now, it will be beneficial when the department or the government has laws and um, eh 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 has laws and regulations on how to control those who are emitting eh gases.
Ha kiba tuwa nte lele, kabuchuwalin ke supporta bill.
In short, I support the bill.
Tumela.
Greetings.
Matavele matkosa ba, sutu ba zana ma Afrika ne re, whatever.
All nations are greeting.
Eh, ntado, o, 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 kata, anata bua kataba ta di pudi. Di bodin kleti kleti.
The gentleman who mentioned goats.
Ma anuke twa, anuketla, momo di parenzi.
No.
Kala melo, batova. Onale ba anaga da.
I'm here, I want to talk about eh, to talk to their parents because there are kids there.
Baba tuwa la bana ba, ki suri si mo bana ba pala.
The parents, there's a, there's a, there's a sewer hole there. We are here for climate change, isn't it?
So Baba tuwa la, bana oki ba la, ba kala melo.
So the parents, they leave the children to play, to play next to the suri's trains and they leave them. And if they leave those childrens there, we're going to have eh, we're going to get illnesses. Because of now, we, we are dealing with Corona.
HIV.
There was HIV and all of these things. And these things affect us. Please, the parents, let's, let's speak to our children.
Akalebo wellin na.
Thank you, I also like to thank this opportunity.
Ki du meri se eh, panele kapeli.
I'd like to greet the panel in front of us.
Le ba ai bohulhi wa mona diyene.
And the community.
Eh, kalibizoi kitiro MuFuking.
Soraba.
Amanda de.
No, there's a corner here that is giving us problems.
Ona lebo tata wo lungu ra wozwa la pele mona.
That corner there, ma.
Mo kona nyani, kona yani.
Can I appoint a monitor so that you can write down all the people who are making noise?
Recopa oba, muslokumi kaba monlebe idiya tango la fatse batuwa lungu ra ba itza lerata.
Yeah, because we can't proceed and then it is disturbing us a lot.
Wakatsa haronu tswa la pele, obani, ntwe na etra citisa ha hulu.
Please, please, please.
Kahona ria kupa se uwe ilese. Wakatsala pele.
Kiallebo andati.
Eh, thank you, sir.
Eh, kine se ki tlalu si zao, regali vitoi kitiro MuFuking.
I've already explained that my name is Diro MuFuking.
Ki hori na watinyena ya eh machumama ra ro amitningi mine.
I'm in ward thirty-four.
Eh, tlasa mu kanstla ra ro na elen Kabelotwani.
Under kanstla Kabelotwani.
Eh, le na ki monguwa, wa ba ai ba mona diyene.
I'm als- I'm also a resident here in the eh N section.
Ki ba ta otsalu safela kama njoma khuchuano hori eh biliena kia support.
I just wanna be brief on eh and say that I support this bill.
Impa ke supporta, kinali di tlazele zote di engapa musomo nete fatza tabayaaka.
But I also want to add on something.
Eh, sekitwa tla otsalu sakataba ya eh ribuaka eh biliena ya climate change.
What I'd like to explain is that since we are talking about this eh bill of climate change.
Eh, rechotse re balabala eh ma sedinyane.
We all, we, now and then we read on media.
Re balaleka bana ba tabulipi.
We also read on people who deal with weather.
Ba be liomba retsalu setza unori, retoba na le si mo sa mu fotoji.
They also tell us that they forecast on us that eh what the weather is going to be like.
Ana ko inte ya.
When time go.
Me re tata mea rika manye le ma ema mu fotoji.
They also tell us that eh how we supposed to respond to certain weather patterns.
Impa boto kiya hori na, ma emo hali eli amu fotoj oje na na, na kisefise lo ro na ro lu kiala hori, resi etze.
But now the question remains, if, if the current, if the conditions are under, are currently like this, we as people, what we supposed to do? What are we supposed to do?
Ki mona mo parliament ya ro na eh la yang, ifila eto re bota di boto, katsa mu fotoji na.
This is where the parliament come to us and ask us eh such questions.
Biliena ebata di tzitinyoza ro na.
They also want our views.
Uto re na, ele bo emo mbona ba eh peto ya lo ho dimu.
To understand our views in regards to the climate change.
Na ki di pe shodi finzer kara di etza.
What can, what our views can we add?
Obana hori eh le fatse kabopar.
To see that the world eh
eh le fatse kabopar.
Or the entire world
hori le abolo ke eh ha.
To be safe.
Rutoa rechotza mona kale ra le ho dimu.
We are also told about eh carbon emission, eh, eh, carbon emission that's high.
Le lo re rutoa re le asinye eh ha.
We are also told that the ozone layer actually it's been eh eh eh, it's dysfunctional.
Le senwa ki ing.
What actually eh makes it dysfunctional?
Impa taba koloko hori, hori, taba erikisitze mona kia obona hori, resirelza le ra le.
Actually, the main point is that how do we protect that ozone layer? That's why we are here.
Hori ri pumane re boluke hili.
So that we can be safe.
Reskaraba na le ntwete lo rendi ya resiti sa bo pilomba ro na.
So that we cannot have challenges in our lives.
Abana le ma tata ilorondre abona ona jala etza ha.
As we can see that we have problems currently
Apeto ya lo ho dimu.
Of the climate change.
Eh, ki ba ta otsa te pe di zetaro fe.
I just want to mention one or two things
Ntlalo osinyana ako.
Without wasting time.
Eh hosana li dibuitze fitile mun.
There were eh eh past speakers that eh, that were here.
Di retsalu se di zor na, ki di inte lo rendi kaza tuiseta.
They've explained what can eh, the solutions.
Hori obana hori climate change eba eh iafetuwa kapa ebama emun elo reng elo kia.
To avert climate change. I also want to mention one or two things. To add on the previous speakers. I'd like to, people are concerned about unemployment. Our people are worried that they're going to lose their employment. Because of, it looks like they're gonna close down farms. According to me. I think we should have an alternative. We should have an alternative to seek what can help us in these conditions. If a company works with coal? We need to find a solution to protect those employees. Perhaps we may come up with a solution to come up with alternative employment. What I can explain is that I don't want to waste time. Thank you. Thank you. Greetings. My name is Mbain Kalin.
From the organization called Twarakanama Africa.
From the organization called Twarakanama Africa.
Environmental, environmental organization.
Environmental organization.
I think they saw me yesterday when I was speaking. So there's a two points that I wanted to say today to add some demand. Because I know is the climate change bill today. So the first demand that we're looking for is to protect the livelihood and income for women in the rural area from the negative effect of climate change. Because women are the most affected in the climate change. And secure and protect the women and access to the food production. The third one is to regulate the business and investment that polluting our environment. The must account for whatever that they do into our environment to protect our environment so that the women can benefit on the environment. So the last one I wanted to say is the security and the production, the protection of the women on the, the protection of the women, what do you call it, rights. And defender, women's defenders. Thank you.
I humbly greet you. I'm here to support the bill. I wish that you can start there at the rural areas. And please provide electricity for rural people. Because of the weather here, it becomes like this because of the smoke that we create. Actually, you must deal with this municipality. They can actually cut off our electricity. We live with our children. We have to wake up early in the morning and make fire and we are cold at that time. I humbly request myself in front of parliament. I would like to mention again that I support this bill. Because of this wonderful idea that you came up with. Thank you. Thank you very much. I think we're done with the submissions of the bill. We have already asked all of you if a tour you want to do and a written submission, you must get a form. The forms are there at the corner. You can write everything that now you want to submit. So that you can be able to make sure that all your submissions are there. But at the same time, we want to make sure that now you must understand this bill. We are not here to tick the box that we are here. All the points that you have raised, they have been taken care of. All the things that you have said, they've been taken off. Some of other things that you have said, yes, they belong to the bill. Others are the competency of the municipality. Therefore, what we will do, we'll ask municipality to answer to some of other things that are there. But we'll always encourage municipality to meet with you. Because if they call meeting, now you must attend. So at the present moment, I'll ask our MMC. He has noted all the things that you have said concerning about municipalities. He will give you the answers. And another thing what actually has noted. He's having a long list here. Of all people who are making noise. So he's going to deal with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much about the issues you have raised. Let us start with this issue that the municipality is not providing the services as well as the indigenous policy. On Friday, we approved the adjustment budget. Which includes the indigenous which we received in our office. We approved over 10,000. We also agreed there in the council to say. Our people, those who are unemployed, they must apply. At municipal offices or to their councillors? That is the first point. Regarding the issue of cables when it is cut or when it is stolen and the municipality takes time to respond, let us say this about it. We have created a WhatsApp group as councillors so that you can register your grievances there and myself as the MMC, I am also in that group so that I am able to make follow-up and understand why is there no electricity or services in a particular area.
You know, Comrade Man, since I was in that group, a month old, we are new Prohun. That is, remember the ANC expand seven councillors. So we are new. Since I arrived there, only one word in Prohunfundi where I was reporting that there is an electric fault. The rest is the so-called suburbs. Which is worrisome, that thing. It's very worrisome.
I am making a humble plea that you take your grievances to the ward councillors so that they can submit such timeously. Another thing you mentioned, it was about the open spaces we have in our communities. I think it is a difficult issue because we need those spaces in our township because some are not conducive to build and some of those open spaces, there are pipes underneath. So it is going to be very dangerous for people to settle on such spaces. I don't know why they call this VIP toilets. I don't like them. I have noted that there are four companies appointed in Tabanchu. As well as Botzabelo. But most of these VIP toilets are in Botzabelo. Now we have initiated, made this initiative that when they erect these toilets, they must inform us as we know that we have this supply chain. Because there are responsibilities to make sure that money is not stolen. So when the project is halfway, they must get a particular percentage so that they can continue with the project. Regarding the animals in the townships, the Department of Agriculture here in Free State under the leadership of Mr. Honorable Saki Mufuke. They have provided us with five farms where we are going to take these animals, but we are not going to take all of them. And the council has started, initiated a bylaw to say that if they are inside the township, they are going to be taken so that you can come and account for, the owners must come and account for those. And now I'm going to this extreme challenge of shortages and water flowing in the township. We know that we have a program called National Intervention and our municipalities experiencing financial challenges. Because the equipment and the cars which are supposed to provide the service, they are sitting there or they are waiting there in the municipal yards because they need repair, to be repaired. But we went to ask for intervention from the National Treasury to come and assist us. I am talking about something that I know because I was there yesterday. When we were provided with those cars, I saw them myself. I know what I'm talking about. We are now waiting for the big vehicles because the problems with regards to the storage, the first one is. We find children in their stones and other things which are not supposed to be in the train system. I am therefore making a humble plea to the community not to throw all those unnecessary items in there. I know that another challenge was because of the infrastructure planning. It is now overburdened. And another thing regarding the stormwater, I was there when they were being serviced. We took out a lot of plastics. These are the things which are not necessary. And we are going to have a meeting tomorrow so that we resolve some of these service delivery issues. Because we are going to ask the Minister of Transport to say, please assist us with these roads. We do not have money so that he can make interventions. I agree with Honorable Ramini that the councillors must report back, especially in those areas like Botzabelo, Wepenar and others. And the problem is that there was no stability in those councils, which give us this challenge. But now we make this promise that we are going to stabilize those municipalities. Thank you very much.
Please give me a round of applause. For what? I don't know. But please give me a round of applause. Okay. Thank you very much. Let me also thank all the councillors that are here, representatives of the municipality. Honorable Ramini, briefs me that we are at the end of our session. Are we in agreement? Do you want to start afresh? Why in the hurry? Because the churches are... Okay. Two things. The inputs that they raised during Monako Fela as a tick box exercise. All the inputs that have been raised here today, it is not a tick box exercise. They are valuable to us. Whether you support the bill or don't support the bill, we have heard you. Now, after this whole process, we will meet as a committee. To consider all the views that have been expressed by the people of South Africa. And then present a report to the National Assembly. From there, it will then go to the National Council of Provinces. For them to consider their own legislative process, which might include public hearings. From there, it will go to the president. Once he has signed it, it becomes an act of parliament. It is a law that is binding all of us. Now, the people of Mangawung have contributed in making this law. And you must give yourself a round of applause. Now, I am also briefed that there is item seventeen. Which door are we going to use for item seventeen? That one. I am going to suggest that we give, we make way for the elders and the people with disabilities. As we leave through that door, we take our item seventeen and we address politics of the stomach. But so, we thank you very much. Thank you very much and the meeting is closed.